The city of Punta Gorda is the Golden Corral. So, that's what they told me. And I did not verify that, but that's what they told me. And so, in a way, we are a victim of our current demographic. And if we don't, I agree with you, it's gotta take baby steps. I mean, we got accused the other night of being in a rush. And I'm like, who's rushing here? I mean, we're taking so much time, we're having all of these discussions. And nothing, and they, they, they go to hyperbole that's already been decided, and that is not the case at all. And, um, I mean, we heard it loud and clear, and, you know, the, the other stuff will just let it go for now. But, um, we are a victim of our de- our current demographic. And unless something changes, the people that develop the private property don't see Punta Gorda as their market. So, I don't know, the cart, the horse, the chicken, the egg, i- it's a tough one. Because, um, you know, we got some new retail, we got Bell's Outlet. I love Bell's Outlet, but that's who we, they see us, Punta Gorda ass, you know? And until something changes, that's basically what, what we've got, Nancy.
I can't disagree with what you've said. Um, I've been at this with the community for a long, long time. So, this is, um, since I first, well, 2006. And, um, I have a great respect for what the community did after Hurricane Charlie. And, uh, coming together and developing the Citizens' Master Plan that really put together a wonderful vision. And we worked that vision. And as a, as a, in a collaborative spirit between, um, government businesses, uh, residents, um, organizations. And, um, it has, it has brought life into this community. When I was in Leadership Charlotte, a lot of what I called twenty and thirty-somethings uh, that were in my Leadership Charlotte class in 2009, um, said, "When we grew up, when we were young, uh, we used to go to Sarasota and Fort Myers looking for something to do." But now, we love coming here, and all of our friends want to come here. Because there's a vibrancy in Punta Gorda that didn't used to exist. So, things have changed. Um, I know, in my neighborhood, when I moved here, it was a lot of people then were in their late eighties. Um, I've got a thirteen-year-old, um, on one side of me, and a seven-year-old on the other side of me. So, I mean, the neighborhoods have changed. Um, and I think are going to continue to, but it's an evolution. It's not gonna be something we're gonna do overnight. Um, I would be, um, and I agree with you, we need to have this, uh, be able to have a conversation. And be able to, uh, moderate and, 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 um, not have all of the heated discussion. Unfortunately, things are different than the way they were, um, then. We have, you know, the next-door neighborhood, uh, the blog that people just go on and rant about. And it seems to fuel the fire on incorrect information that we then have to combat. But, um, I would totally be in favor of us somehow, um, looking at the Citizens' Master Plan again. And, and really coming up with, um, and I think, I would be in favor of hiring an outside, uh, firm. I, I, God bless our staff and the, the excellent capabilities that they have. But I think that we need someone to facilitate this, like a Jaime Correa type of person, that could help facilitate a discussion, a charrette, that would give people an opportunity to participate, but it would help frame up maybe what codes might need to be tweaked. Um, and, and help define some of those ideas. I think things are going to change, um, with Western Michigan coming here. I think this place is gonna become a college town over time. I mean, it has that potential. Because with college students, there are different things, and they have their own dive that they like to go to and things like that. Um, you know, I grew up in a town that had a college, and we know, we all were, you know, I think here, where college students are young stu- young people that knew what we'd like to do at that point in time in our lives, so. Um, and I, I think we will be able to solve some of these issues.
I would be totally in favor of updating the master plan, but the thought that's out there is that the city can do it themselves and we cannot.
No, I-
No, it's gotta be professionally done and probably a new set of eyes. I, in fact, Mitchell and I had a, and Joan, we sat down, we went through that whole checklist of what was incorporated. Because this is one of the things that I took out, out from Monday night, which maybe you can, we can talk here now. Um, they hate the Marriott, but that all came out of the changes that we made.
Yes.
So, if they don't like that and they don't want any change, we're in a no-win situation in that-
Well, and-
In that scenario.
I, I, I understand, and I know, uh, a lot of people don't like it. Um, I happen to live with somebody who thinks it's beautiful. So, um, there are some people here, you know, but, um, uh-
But didn't we hear that loud and clear?
We did, we heard that loud and clear, I hear it all the time. And, and yet, um, if we have a, a plan in collaboration with Team Punta Gorda and others, um, you know, and giving us the opportunity to update this and, and where did we go? I think it's gonna help us, perhaps, as a community, um, come together around some of these. Because it certainly brought the community together after Hurricane Charlie. Um, Harvey was a, a part of it, and, and it was a real catalyst. Uh, and, and I know that when we sat down and we had representatives from team and the city work together, over ninety percent of the plan had been implemented in some way, some, some fashion. And there were things that were just not appropriate, they were pie in the sky kinds of things. Um, but I think it would help us.
Lynn?
Um, I, I totally agree about the Team Punta Gorda Master Plan. Um, I, I've heard this loud and clear in other venues all over the place, that we should revisit that plan and bring that current, and make it something that we can use as our tool to guide us going forward. And that would certainly get a lot of the heat off of council for, you know, for and against different things. Um, but I've heard it hundreds of times already. So, I think that that would benefit everybody in the city for the, for the long haul. And let's not make it just a five-year plan, let's make it a ten-to, a twenty or a thirty-year plan. And what are we doing now to, to change things, what are we going to do ten years from now, and so on, and so on? Um, but I, but I do think that that would be extremely valuable to the whole city. And I, and I would even go so far as to make a motion to, to get something started on it. Um, we've got an incredibly talented citizenry in this town. An incredibly talented group of people that live here. Very, very smart, from all walks of life, great personalities, and people who have lived in all different places around the country and all around the world. And I think that some of that talent should not go unused to, to help guide us with this plan. Um, as far as the plan for the downtown City Marketplace property, I did contact one of the, uh, principals who was involved in the one-on-one meetings that we each had, I think we all had them. Um, and unfortunately, they can't afford to buy the land.
I understand.
It's now nine point four million dollars. Now, I, I mean, I don't know what Mr. Boff is thinking, but, I mean, God bless him if he can get that kind of money out of it. But nobody can afford to buy the land and still have money left over to build anything on it. And so, if, if it were priced at a reasonable price, they would probably pursue the project that they talked to us about. And it was gonna be awesome. It didn't require a height variance, it didn't require any changes to the current code, which would be awesome. And they would be amenable to doing the stepbacks and the setbacks, and making it a garden-type environment with a courtyard, and it would be awesome, it would just be beautiful. And it would solve every problem that we ever questioned about that piece of property. But they can't afford to buy the land now, and it's just ludicrous what the guy is asking for it. So, that's very unfortunate. Um, and, um, as far as, um, what we are now, we are what we are now because Money Magazine and the Boating Magazines all advertised us as one of the ten best places to retire. Well, of course, you're gonna get retirees in the community, that's what we are. We are, uh, we have become a retirement community, and we've got a lot of the baby boomers here now. We had a huge influx of new citizens that moved here, um, in the early two thousands. And that's what we've become. And it's gonna take a while before that generation moves on. So, w- we have to decide, are we going to try to attract younger people? Are we gonna try to do different things than what we've been doing? Um, and, and how do we go about doing that? But we, we have to start with something basic, like getting the master plan updated. And, and let's maybe try to talk to Joe Boff and see if he's amenable to a reasonable discussion about his property. I mean, that, that's a big piece of the puzzle.
I would agree.
A huge missing tooth downtown.
Yep.
So, that's, that's my comments.
Um, I'm probably gonna be the funny guy. Um, I, I, I see us as like, you know the story of the emperor of no clothes? I see us as naked, I think that we believe that we're wearing grandiose clothes. We are, um, growing up here, all of your needs can be met in Punta Gorda. Now, you have to cross the bridge north or south to get anything. I think, I think honestly, we're, we're, we're delusional in terms of thinking we're better than we are, um, in terms of our positioning. I've talked to Venice leadership about why they have a year-round economy. One, they didn't have hurricanes, so they didn't destroy their downtown. But with that said, they have a very, very, very robust concentrated downtown with many, 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 many businesses that allow their residents in Venice not to leave. They have a very similar demographic to Punta Gorda. So, to some degree, we say our demographic, but the truth is, Venice is like the same, but they don't have these issues. Secondly, they do have a trolley system, most people around. Thirdly, they treat their locals well. But they, they, they're not on the thing where they only value their seasonal residents, that is actually a balance. And they make a point to make sure the locals feel valued. Also, they don't do the discounted off-season things as well. They actually, it's consistent pricing, they have a year-round economy, they have a similar demographic, and what they also do to downtown, and why, and I think oftentimes when people think about downtown, I think an ideal on people's mind would be like Celebration, Florida. And I just read what Celebration, Florida is, because I think this is what people say that they want, but, but if to hear what it actually is. And this deals with our downtown, a one-concentrated downtown. "It borrowed heavily from burgeoning young movement called new urbanism, pioneered by a duo of Miami architects, the Town of Seaside just a few years before. Without getting into specifics, the idea was simple, to combat the endless creeping invasive sprawl that engulfed millions of acres in U.S. Planners remodeled the developments on small towns of early America with compact downtowns, walkable streets, diverse housing stock, and plentiful public spaces." I think that we, we know this, but we don't know this. I, 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 and I, I think that like planning and shredding to death, we're still not addressing the fact that we, we have, if we're wanting to have an actual town as viable, we've got to picture it downtown. And I, I think we wanna just talk around that. And I'll just leave one last thought, this, this, and I'll tell you at the end who this is. "As we peer into society's future, we, you and I, and our government must avoid the impulse to live only for today, plundering for our own ease and convenience the precious resources of tomorrow. We cannot mortgage that material asset to our grandchildren without risking the loss also of their political and spiritual heritage. We want democracy to survive for all the generations to come, not to become the insolvent phantom of tomorrow." That was President Eisenhower in his parallel speech. I say this because, again, why I mention this emperor of no clothes, I think we all know that we're moved back into Hurricane Zone, we're just in that time again. We, if a hurricane actually hit us, we're done, we're bankrupt. We, we, we're pretending that we have like time, we don't have time. We've been talking about this for years, and, and, and we also, we have this thing called a sunseeker. What will happen if we do not choose our development, develop on our own terms? We will be developed. Because the economist will be that someone can make use of that no-lot line, fifty-foot ugly building. And, and the thing is, is that unless we actually make a decisive choice to redevelop, restore our downtown as it was before, we're gonna have issues. I, I, I think that we don't have the time we have. I think that we're playing with ourselves, and I think that if we don't want the market to force us what we don't wanna do, I think we have to get on top of this. I, I think that, I really think that we have to be more assertive and more decisive. And we have to listen to all of our people. We, we, we were very weak to the point where we only go off popularity contest. And when it comes to our situation in this role, we're not supposed to go off popularity contest. We're supposed to be thinking about the grid or everything. We, we do not consider the many people of Punta Gorda. We consider the people that speak to us at these meetings. Good enough people work, we don't hear them. I personally like nine o'clock morning meetings, but with that said, I have to deal with them, a caveat in my hand, I know for a fact I'm not hearing from a majority of the people. And so, pretending that listening to people here only is, is representative of Punta Gorda, this is not true. And I think that we have to get past this, but I do think we owe it to our present residents and our future residents that we get on this and we actually restore our downtown. I, I, I think it's very important to do so.
So, one thing that came up is the, the misinformation that we heard on Monday night. I mean, somebody stood up and said, you know, "Everybody knows who owns the City Marketplace, he lives in Punta Gorda." I've personally never met the man, he does not live in Punta Gorda, he lives in Naples. His LLC, everything is registered in Naples. So, whoever they think owns it really does not own it. I mean, I mean, we heard so much stuff that went on that they're just, they weren't listening. So, if, if whatever we can do to get some people to start listening and then talking, because even, you know, it's given Howard a meme column in the Weekly Highlight Report, "What you don't know," "What you don't know, misnomers and misinformation." I mean, the franchise thing came up again, "Oh, well, we don't allow franchises." O'Reilly's, Dollar General, uh, Subway-
Golden Corral.
Golden Corral, we've got Hungry Howie's Pizza, I mean-
Waffle House.
Waffle House, Chase Bank, I mean, all the banks are franchises, they're all name-brand places. I mean, to combat some of that, we've got to get these people to start listening and participating in a, in a positive way.
Yeah.
Um, which I don't think they're gonna do that on that Nextdoor app, I'm sorry, but, um, and that's the, that, I had to get off of it because I'm on there as Rachel Kiesling, eight fifty Bemidne Lane. And, you know, the, the, it just, it just got to the point where it was not healthy for me to participate and even read what they were saying about me and now my husband too. So, my mother-in-law takes it all in for us, and she's not happy. But, um, I, I did get off of it because it was so negative. But is, if, if a charrette and an update to the Citizens' Master Plan can get some positive energy moving, I'm for it. I mean, I don't think it can hurt.
No, no, it can't hurt, but we have to be timely, and on this note-
We need to be timely.
Absolutely.
And we, one thing, on this note, we have to, what our residents really enjoy, it, it's funny, because if we are not forward-thinking and we only go off poverty contest, we would not have Fisherman's Village, we would not have Vivante, we would not have Leslie Craft House, we would not have Button Village, we would not have the 7-Eleven that was there in Arquista. All those things were vehemently opposed, but council saw that this is something that was good for the community. And I think that we are all smart enough people that with hearing the input, with referring to the comfort plan, and with discussion, I think we can develop something. But we can't act as if we, there's no urgency on this, I think there is.
One thing about the 7-Eleven, they didn't want it, and then they cried when it closed, they didn't-
And now they're, so then there's gonna be a tattoo parlor there.
Gary.
So, I'm glad that this is, this is, this, this, this conversation is going the way it is. Uh, we do have a short-term problem, and Jaha, you, thank you, Cummins, our Councilman Cummins, you just touched on it again. Uh, we have a short, a problem with our short-term reserve. I think that's something that we should ask our staff to deal with aggressively this year, personally. That's just me personally. Also, when we talk about Punta Gorda, um, yes, we are a boating community, but we're a lot more. B, BSI and PGI is a boating community. East of forty-one, not so much, but there is a community there. And I've seen this council, time and time again, do the right thing when we deal with things piecemeal, even though it wasn't the benefit of necessarily even the majority. Boca Grande, maybe we'll get grant, but maybe we, we won't. But we're committed to get that neighborhood structurally and physically, uh, in great, great shape. I applaud my, applaud all of you for standing firm, do the right things when, when we get them as a piecemeal. And really, that's the purpose, is I just want us to think a little bit more holistically. I also don't want us to forget, our staff has demonstrated multiple times that they can handle big projects. We've got a wonderful water treatment plant coming on line here in the next two years. The city had it, uh, and one of the things, Kim, because I got up here because of my energy, Kim said, oh, she thanked me for being there because she wasn't, she made, when they made the decision, they, it was some nervousness, because it was a lot of money. And I came on and said, "Oh, you know, technically, this is pretty cool." And, 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 uh, uh, Kim, Kim told me that she took a, took a breath after my first chance that I got to do my technical thing with these guys. But the point being is, is we've got an airport, it's not in our city, but we've got an airport. We've got a service area that is gonna have an abundance of water. We've already state, taken the next steps to ensure that we have sewer available. We've taken that. So, we're talking about downtown, and that's absolutely important because it's gonna, it's gonna be important to develop downtown if we're gonna develop or we see the development of the industrial park. And you have in that industrial park, as, as I understand, you have Chaney Brothers there, that's already signed a letter of intent, that if we ever get to touch them, they're gonna annex that. So, Punta Gorda is more than just a boating community. I, I also heard one thing, I did hear one thing Monday, I took a little bit of offense at, and I think I'll share it with you, is somebody said that they didn't think we had the cultural aspects. And I'm saying, gee, I thought we had the VAC, the Visual Arts Center, I thought we had, uh-
Symphony.
The Symphony.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we have the Russian Ballet that comes here every year at the, at the Convention Center. Uh, we have the Guitar Army, we have all of these events going on. I understand that there's even some entertainment that goes on at Fisherman's Village once in a while.
I wish Patty was here to hear me, but, uh-
We have a lot going on in this community. And, uh, and, uh, culturally, I think we're in pretty good shape. I think what we're, we lack is the image, and that's part of what branding is about, is to attract these other avenues to allow us to be a good, viable community and still maintain the core of what we have. And that's, that's our challenge, and that's why I just wanted to bring this, so that we think about that in total. So, when we're talking about Boca Grande neighborhood, we're not talking about Boca Grande neighborhood, we're talking about it as, in the entirety of Punta Gorda. If we, uh, and I would encourage staff to look at it, if, if that acre that's sitting in, in Bird Section, you know, I put it down, uh, you know, it's down to a hundred and twenty-nine thousand right now.
And guess who owns it?
Who?
Joe Boff.
Oh, maybe we, maybe we can get a two-for-one deal. Maybe we can get a two-for-one deal. But he's, he's, he's since reduced it.
Can we set up a meeting with him? Harvey, you know him.
Okay.
I'll go with you, I'll do it any day of the week.
I think that we should-
Now, it'll, it would cost a little money to develop it, because there's no water to that, that lot right now. But, you know, if we're gonna do something, we'd do something, I, I'm just saying, we should think in, in those terms.
Yeah.
And, uh-
I agree.
And then also, when we do do a plan, we're talking about updating a 2005 plan, it really needs to be up- A true strategic plan is updated yearly, just like a budget. Because things do change on a yearly basis. So, that should be part, I would encourage us to have that, to update that plan, and then have the updating of that plan be part of our culture, the same way we update a budget.
And let's set up a target hit list of things we wanna work on in priority order. That's, I mean, that's, that's really what we gotta do.
And how to get there.
Right.
The other thing we heard the other night is that we're shipping millions of gallons to Cape Coral, and Howard and I can't find the pipe or the shut-off valve to stop the water from going to Cape Coral.
I think it's a garden hose, I think it's a garden hose.
Yes. Or this hat that we approved, we voted on, we approved the, uh, excuse me, restaurant in Gilchrist Park.
Oh, that made me mad.
Which we never did, it never even came to the city, so. Uh, I have two things. Uh, one is, um, from the, uh, the discussion on finance, uh, one of the issues that we have avoided intentionally is the topic of assessments. And I know Howard brought it up when we talked about drainage. And I think it's, assessments is one of those things that we may have been able to avoid successfully, but it may be a topic that we need to explore, only because, um, when you look at assessments, there are many groups right now that don't pay assessments, when it comes to nonprofits, government, um, it just, uh, people that may have, the, the property value may be so low that they don't pay the, you know, property taxes. So, there, there are things, services that we are delivering that, um, maybe need to be more broadly distributed and would help us pay for something.
And don't forget the additional, uh, homestead exemption is gonna be up for a vote.
Yes, yes.
So, that may be a relevant time to talk about it.
So, that, that is one. Um, and when it comes to the, um, Citizens' Master Plan and what happened then, and the new urbanism, um, that, that drove that, um, there's a lot of validity to the, all the principles, but I think it's how it is implemented and all of that, I think, uh, would be a timely thing for us to really get to. And it would help us, and it, and it doesn't have to take long. Because actually, when the Citizens, Harvey, you were part of this, when you, um, retained Jaime Correa, it was just a matter of a couple of months and they had a plan. So, it was a very, very quick and timely, wasn't it?
But, but this time, we would need to have an economist involved.
Okay, but it was a few months-
The macroeconomics are missing.
What?
The macroeconomics are missing with that plan, that's why we have problems, is that it was done kind of in a vacuum that didn't deal with our specific realities.
Mm-hmm, so, anyway.
Yes, Helen.
So, I know you didn't take a formal vote.
Well, Lynn was close, she made-
But can we, um, uh, move forward in putting out a request for proposal to bring somebody onboard? Because we don't have the staff to do this.
Right.
And it really takes a set of fresh eyes, it should, in my opinion.
Yeah.
Technically, we have the staff to do it.
Right.
Quantity-wise, we don't have enough people to, to put on it.
Yes.
We did in 2006. Put out a proposal to bring a firm onboard to, uh, update, to take a look at the Citizens' Master Plan and see where we need to go. Can, do we have enough support now to put it out on the street so we can bring somebody onboard, see what it costs, and get moving on it?
Do we wanna do this, or do we wanna ask Team Punta Gorda to facilitate it?
Well, may I make a comment about that?
May I make a suggestion?
Yes.
As a council, you voted that the city take the leadership role.
Yes.
That's right.
And my, I was gonna support that, Howard, because, um, one of the issues, having been deeply involved in all this, um, it was a citizen-led event when we did the Citizens' Master Plan, um, which was wonderful. Um, but we used Delray Beach as a mo- as a model. And Delray, Delray Beach had the same consultant, Jaime Correa, helped them. The difference was, Delray Beach hired Jaime Correa, the city hired. So, it was, it was a much easier process at the time to really implement because of, the city took a leadership role, and I think that we're in that position now.
That works for me.
We will, uh, we will get that out.
And it's gonna, I mean, uh, Marion does an excellent job, but we need somebody very specific who's, you know, downtown, urban.
Well, we'll have a panel set up to-
Okay, good.
And, uh, now-
Somebody-
We can even have you do the interviews if you'd like.
Hey, maybe.
I, I would certainly-
I, I would be okay with that. The more information we can get out there, the better.
Okay. Um, number two, if we're gonna do that, um, you know, we have a lot of projects on the, on the, that we're undertaking. Do you really wanna move forward with architectural and building height guidelines until we get this thing accomplished?
Well, it gives us a framework, I, I mean, we have some very good, uh, see, I don't wanna diminish the quality of our staff. I understand the bigger picture-
My staff can do it. I'm saying, do you wanna do that now when we haven't gone through this process?
But he has framework, I think we can share with this person. Because he's from here and he's-
I think we-
Been designing for us, and he knows here.
Concurrently.
I feel that, that we should do this first, before we do, and I don't think it's gonna diminish anything, but I think it all needs to fit together. And, um, I would, I would not, yeah, I just feel that-
We can continue to have staff work on it, but we need to, whoever we hire needs to have a view of that, is my point.
Yeah.
It's just that he, this new person is gonna have this much knowledge of us. And I, I would say, it would be worthless if it wasn't concurrent with, with our urban design staff doing it.
Okay, we will do. And the last point I wanna make is, uh, I think we all need to stop beating us over the head. If we have a very enviable community, we continue to do so, or else all these folks wouldn't be moving here, or else the historic district area wouldn't be filling up. Punta Gorda Isles and Burnstour Isles and Burnstour Meadows wouldn't be filling up. People wanna be here, let's stop killing ourselves. We are a very enviable place to live.
Absolutely.
One last thing, um, just with our thinking about this global thing. Um, for, when it comes to future projects like the Cut Through, I, I had a meeting last week with residents up in the, in, in like the Collingwood, Edgewater area, because, you know, they have their own kind of thing. It may be worth us considering having, um, a special district created for that. That way, it can then assume the cost of it, and, and so it wouldn't impact the city as much. And it would be its own entity, and it's just something to explore.
It already is.
No, a special district for the Cut Through.
It already is.
No, then it's gonna revert into the PGI canalis, canal-
The Bird Section people are already in, in assessment district.
Yeah, but he means in perpetuity.
Like, you know how we have like city, county, school board, special district?
Oh.
If it'd be able to go to the bond market and actually, because then we can amortize the cost over a longer period of time, it would be probably a less of assessment to the residents, and the city wouldn't have that financial burden. I'm just saying something to explore. We just have laws on hand which we can use, plus, let's say if there was an issue, say FEMA, something like, that company would be responsible for going to commit. I just say for us, we know how much staff we have, we also, there's expertise, there are companies that do this. Like West Villages has this, The Villages has this. Um, these are the kind of things, I just think we can, you know, being more strategic, this is a way where we can cauterize that, so it would, it would be good, but also for our residents, it would make the, the cost of it less, and it would limit it to that area, I just, uh, something.
You wanna put that on a future agenda?
Yes, yes.
Write that down.
So, that's a special district then, independent district.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
We've already voted to have an assessment. We've already voted to have an assessment district. I'm very confused on what you're trying to accomplish because it's already been decided and it's already been voted on.
No, but the county knows the process with this. Like the county would have to, there's, there's a whole process. Special District is, is its own government. They have its own board.
I don't support that.
It'd be able to go to the board, it'd be able to go to the bottom market. Example, we're looking at paying for this property, et cetera. It's gonna cost X amount. We would be able to absorb this cost without absorbing the cost. I don't know, just something to explore.
I don't like that idea at all. And I certainly wouldn't want to be separated from the city, the city as a, as a city. I don't, I don't, I don't support that.
But our budget right now, at this point, our whole future is we're still paying more and more without any more current activity. Part of this is trying to, you know, balance this out. That's one of the ways you can balance this out. If people don't want a certain amount of activity, we can't have it. So we want to pay all this money and have no activity. You have to, we have to choose. These are some of the choices. That's why the conversation is part of having a balanced conversation about not being a part of the city with what we want.
I, I think what Lynn's saying is, is like with the bird cut, the people that are gonna be, they, they're already, they're gonna get their assessment, whatever their assessment is. Nobody in the historic district is gonna be paying for that.
Right, right. No, he's, he's saying create its own government.
Government.
I, I don't, I don't support that at all.
You know, it'd be the same as, as if when Burnstar Isles gets the, the figures back on the underground utilities and we decide to become our own separate government, it just to.
For the purpose of finance only. It, it's kind of like if we were looking at doing, let's say, residential things at the airport, let's say for Washington Michigan University. Setting one up would provide a financing vehicle that would allow it to be paid for and not have to come out of the city or county coffers. I'm saying this is just a conversation in terms of creative financing. That's, that's what this is. It's not anything other than that.
But, but the bird cut's not gonna come out of the city coffers?
Well, it, I mean, it, it depends. I mean, it's not, but it is. I mean, it's gonna be assessed, but let's say there's, say FEMA or something happens. Hurricane happens, we're gonna need to pay in advance for, what I'm saying, I'm just thinking about, we just don't think enough about the impacts of what we're doing. And I'm saying that's just something to explore.
I disagree with that. I think we think very, very long and hard about a lot of this. I really do.
Well, he, he can bring this to an agenda and then we can have it as a proper item and you can bring the proper backup material and we can continue from that.
With a larger project, this isn't, the bird cut's not that big a project. I can see with a larger project, which you're talking about, and I think it's, it's worth to bring an agenda to discuss that and get learning ins and outs. I think there could be projects in the future that that could be beneficial to us. I'm not sure about this, but I'm open.
Yeah, that's, that's basically it. Just talking about special districts.
So you work with Howard and get that on a future agenda. All right. Thank you, Gary.
Well, thank you guys. And I'm looking forward to future conversations.
Okay, next we're going into unfinished business, continued discussion of the ban on parking on the grass in Gilchrist Park. Not a note.
Let me refresh the various options that we have in front of you. One is stay the course. We redesigned the park and we put together some regulations and stay the course. By staying the course, we will continue as a staff to not rent out the park on Tuesday and Thursday night. And allow musicians, whoever, whoever wants to come on a first come, first basis and play music or play in the grass and do whatever you want. We will continue to just do that. The second option is just take up the bollards and let anybody park on the grass anytime you want. Go back to the way it used to be. The third option is only allow parking on the grass for Tuesday and Thursday night. We can do that. We remove the bollards around three, three-thirty and we put them back the next morning. The fourth option is to have the Guitar Army folks get an event permit or get a sponsor, to sponsor and pay for an event permit. And in that way, as a special event, it's contained, they can, it's their park for that Tuesday or Thursday night. They'll have to purchase, they have to pay for the permit, in which case, if there's any damage, we can go and use those dollars to do what we need to do to bring it back together. Fifth option is to work with Nickel Ride to set up shop right here in the parking lot and trolley people back and forth, those who need it, on Tuesday and Thursday night and bring them to the park. The sixth option is to redesign the park, put in more spaces. One option is to add thirty to forty more parking spaces. Now, that would take up some of the grass area already and put in more parking by the pavilion all the way on down to Durance. We would have to then add some more stormwater retention. But that would definitely add more parking. Of course, that would also not include parking on the grass. And the seventh option is to realign some of the parking spaces on Harvey Street entrance. We currently have two ADA spaces. We could add more. Because we heard that we need more ADA spaces for those who want to get right to the pavilion on those nights, Tuesday and Thursday night. We could redesign and add more ADA spaces just there. So those are seven options. If you heard from the folks from the Guitar Army and those who, and other than the Guitar Army, those who support the Tuesday and Thursday night music, it doesn't matter how many parking spaces you add. The key is they want parking on the grass. That's the way it's always been done. So, those are your options.
Thank you. Gary?
Question, regarding the Nickel Ride, would we be in a position, since there are smaller electric vehicles, that they could take a ADA type person directly to the pavilion?
They're ADA compliant, but I mean, could, could they drive up to the pavilion? I mean, how would that, I mean, would they be able to drive up to the pavilion?
Not unless we open the bollards. I guess, I guess if it's a small enough car, you could weave your way in and out around the bollards. I mean, you could always do that.
So that's not gonna solve our problem at all?
That's not gonna solve the problem though.
Not, not even close. I mean, I, I think it's great to have the Nickel Ride.
Mm-hmm. They were at the Blues and Brews this weekend.
Yeah, that was their first.
Yeah, they did very well. I mean, they were, they were right there.
Who pays for it?
Uh, tips. Yeah, advertising, you tip them, I think. Yeah. And I think one thing, I, at this weekend at the Blues and Brews that, it was at the Sheraton on the event lawn that they have and it's in really bad shape over there. I mean, it was, it's, it's really rough. I mean, I pulled it up on Google Earth and this was even before they built the other tiki hut, the chicky hut that they have there. But the, the area is, is really beat up. And I think, you know, if we did allow parking on the grass, we're, we're just gonna give up what, what we just installed. So there's really no way around that. To say it's just gonna perk back up and be fine is, is not going to be the case. Because we went through this at Lashley and we didn't even allow it weekly. We just had the events there and we know how much that cost us to fix. So I'm waiting to hear more of the discussion.
I, I think that this discussion is actually a larger discussion. And what I mean by that is that I think it's really about people being overlooked in planning. That I think that we as a council have gotten used to making our decisions based on only who we're hearing and, and not who is also there. I give the example, when, when we were talking about the Waterfront Activity Center, I ended up meeting with the Bayfront dancers. These are two hundred elders that meet twice a week. Assuming two hundred people is like crazy in its own. But the fact that they've been there for ten years and they didn't exist as a stakeholder. Like, in the whole conversation, they did not exist. And they are the like longest standing people at that facility. Point of me saying this is that I think we ourselves have gotten too used to not actually looking to think about a bigger picture than only what's put in front of us. And part of it, why I brought these people binders, I think we, this is, this is our comp plan. This is the new one, twenty forty. We, when we, sorry, when we're making decisions, our decisions to be based on the citizens' input that we receive, based on confidence, potential evidence and a reflection on this here. This, this is a very, very big comprehensive plan, the one that's with the state that really gives us a bigger picture. And I find that a consequence is, yes, we can say that the Guitar Army should have been a discussion over the last nine years. But if they weren't, it still doesn't mean that they shouldn't be represented. And I, I find that we're in a situation where this is, this, this is more of a, an indictment of, of the fact that, that we are maybe are not doing what we really should be doing in terms of how we really, really, really have a macro view of what the citizen's dream is. And so kind of like in this regard, I mean, my thoughts in regard to this is that based on, I, I believe in a parking ban. But I believe that in, in terms of this, that because of the historical overflow, that that should be recognized in terms of just us actually not having enough spaces on there historically. That I, I would say that if we had signage that said specifically for these two days, parking was allowed there only, that would be, I think, a way to deal with this gap. Because I, I, I do think that we should have a parking ban, but I think in this case, we historically have had overage. And I think that recognizing that, that wasn't in our plans because that wasn't spoken. And we've gotten used to only responding to what is spoken and maybe not stay. It's kind of like when ALF came up. I ended up meeting with a bunch of elders in their eighties who did not come to meetings. But who, every single one of them asked me, can you please bring an ALF, a Class A to our, to our city? Because I wouldn't have somewhere to live when I'm older. I want to be with one of my friends. Not, that sentiment was not expressed in any of our meetings. I had to go out and seek it. I had to go out and meet with other people who lived in the community who I thought may also be impacted. But, and I'm saying that we ourselves, we need to do a better job of, of really understanding all of our people, not only the ones who are voicing themselves.
I guess I have to really take offense to the fact that you would think we don't. Jahah, you know, for five years, I mean, I spend so much time every week in communication with people about issues. I've met with people about the ALF, people that are seniors, expressing opinions. This is not about just what goes on here at our council meeting. This is about what goes on in this community every day, twenty-four hours a day. We work seven days a week at responding to the community and communicating. I have over fifteen hundred people that I communicate with every week. Okay? So it's, our, our, you've really struck a chord with me. And we, we really take this job seriously and don't, and try to do the best job we can. And, and, and consider all facts. And I know that, Rachel, you've been doing this for a long time. I don't think it's just what comes up here at the dais.
Right.
It's not. And, and I get it, that there, there can be a group that maybe has cho, have chosen not to. We have residents that don't even pay attention to anything. I mean, I got an email yesterday from a lady who, I didn't, I got the wrong size cart. Didn't, has totally oblivious to everything that we did about the carts. And so.
When they showed up, they got their attention.
It did. Yes. So, you know, those kinds of things are gonna happen. So, anyway.
And I do, I do feel bad about, you know, I asked our engineering firm to be here to listen, listen to the, the pain that we're going through now. Because when you do go visit that roundabout area, I think we had really good intentions. We still wanted to have a drop off. It's ADA compliant where it probably was not ideal before. We wanted a drop off area. We, it, we do host events in the park, so we did want to accommodate the events. We have longstanding events that have taken place in that park. So I think, you know, going in that roundabout area, I really do see a way that that specific area could have been better. We took the fire truck because it was, you know, the fire truck and being able to turn around and all of that. But if there's an emergency, the fire truck's gonna pull in and they're gonna jump out. They're gonna worry about getting the truck out of there later. They're not gonna go all the way around the circle and then park and then get out. I mean, so I don't know. I, I am disappointed in, in the way that the park evolved over time. I think we've looked at it so many times that we just kind of really didn't visualize that specific area. Because I feel like if we could have redesigned that in a backwards P and kept the parking going and because somebody did say to me, there's no place to really pull in to be able to look at the sunset. You know, with the on-street parking and the parking going this way, you really can't pull in anywhere unless you're in that roundabout, which are gonna be turned one way, well, they, it only goes one way. But you can't just pull in like you used to be able to and, and watch the sunsets or the sunrise. So, I mean, part of it is the design, which, you know, now that it's there, it's, it's disappointing. The roundabout, for me, that raised area is where I had the questions of why we did that in that specific area. Because it feels like it could have been more space for parking. So I, I don't know. I mean, we did get an email that if we do do any kind of redesign, it has to go through FDOT, which we know what we went through with that. And you gotta have PPM manuals. And I don't even know, know how that would work. So I don't really think that's fiscally responsible at, at this time. So I'm, I'm just really, really hesitant to do anything then, except for more ADA, because I went down there with Rick and we could turn three, three of those parking spaces into two more ADA. That's, that would be great. I think we definitely should do that. But other than that, we haven't been through rainy season, event season. We're gonna have construction in there with the bathrooms. I just, I don't, I'm.
With, with the rainy season part, could Lance have discretion on when people could park and not park in terms of destruction to the, I don't know, just.
Everybody, Lance is our maintenance worker that has to park. People don't know who Lance is.
All right, sorry. You know Lance is. One, one thing on regard, and, and I apologize if it was not, I was, I was assuming it as a we when I was talking about us dropping a ball, not just you. Because like example, for the historic district, one hand, residents have felt neglected for a great deal. It's a part of why there's the energy was forming it. But with that said, with myself, I forget about Carmelita, Boca Grande, those areas. I have to make sure myself that they exist in my mind, because when I'm existing, I'm, my, my brain is thinking residents near the waterfront area. And so even myself, I have to make sure that I'm not remiss in making sure that I reach people in these areas because most, many of them in those areas are working and they're not gonna be here. And I can't assume because they're not here that they don't have a voice, that they don't want things. So that's what I'm saying. This is, I'm saying this is a shared thing. This is not any indictment of visuals.
You, you asked if, if our Public Works maintenance worker could have the leeway to make a determination on Tuesday or Thursday night if it's raining. My response is, please do not. Please do not allow it. Because as soon as, as soon as he or she, whoever is maintaining the park at the time, says no, the folks on music on Tuesday and Thursday night, if they're not allowed to park on the grass, we're gonna hear about it.
Yeah.
All right, got you.
Please don't do it.
And you know, the other thing is that if they're at Public Works, it, just because they're at Public Works, they may not know if it rains at Gilchrist Park or not either. So.
Lynn had her hand up.
I think, I think what I'm hearing is that in general, I, most of us are, are in agreement that, that we shouldn't probably allow parking on the grass. However, have, that being said, I still maintain that we don't have adequate parking in the park. And I, when I brought it up at the last meeting when we talked about this, my suggestion was to go back to the way it was in the L shape. And I still maintain that. I don't like the design that forms a U shape and brings you back out of the park because that takes a huge amount of the grass out of it. And I would still like to see a design where we go back to the way it was before that would allow people to pull up in front of the pavilion, at least get closer to where the gazebo is and be able to park down in that area at the very least, because I think that would make more sense. I'm not crazy about the U shape at all. I think that's overkill and inside the park, you want it to be a park. You want it to be maintained as a park, but we don't have adequate parking in the park. And, and we're not getting the amount of people using the park that probably would if there were additional parking.
Yeah.
So if it ma, if it requires FDOT approval, then so be it.
Gary?
I don't, in, in industry, we have the eighty-twenty rule. You can correct eighty percent of the problem for twenty percent of the effort. And then the last twenty percent takes eighty percent of the effort. And nothing's ever perfect. So this is the first, there's, there's this huge park along the harbor. And we've got plans to work our way down it. So if we have made a error here for some of our constituents, maybe, and I'm very empathetic towards the Guitar Army, the long-term solution may be what we do down here for them. Because maybe we need to leave this the way it is, but we still have room to change what we do over here and maybe accommodate that, you know. I, I, I'm just saying is we should open our mind, look at it, the whole area, all the way down to, was it, what's the last park? Linear Park? When you get almost to Fisherman's Village.
You mean Alice?
Yeah.
I'm just saying, you, you got, you got park all the way down to Fisherman's Village. And there's a lot of property in there that maybe we could do something different. Maybe we could do something.